Good evening. Thank you. I'd like to call to order the Cumberland School Committee meeting, a regular meeting of the Cumberland School Committee today, Thursday, April 24th, 2025, at 7:00 PM. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Approval of the, approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda? Motion by Ms. Goldstein? Nope. Ms. Smith, second by Mr. Bacon. All in favor? Any opposed? That passes seven to zero. Before we move on to the consent agenda, I just want to update everyone. With respect to an item which is agended as public hearing reading of amended policies, A-5, Title IX protections from sex-based discrimination, and K-6 textbook, textbook loans to students enrolled in public, non-public schools, as well as new business discussion and a vote on amended policies that were, that were read into record, we failed to agenda the required public comment specific to adopting new or amended policies. Our policy on policy amendment requires a specific public comment opportunity on any new policy or proposed amendment to a policy. So the committee is going to take no action on this item this evening, and we will plan to agenda for our next meeting on May 8th. Thank you. Consent agenda, approval of minutes, regular meetings for 10, 2025, executive session meetings for 10, 2025. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes and consent agenda? Motion by Ms. Goldstein?
Second.
Second by Ms. Smith. All in favor? Any opposed? That passes seven to zero. Student government report, student government activities?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Audrey Lambert, the Vice President of the High School Student Government, and with me is Audie, our freshman class president. I am here to quickly discuss the events that recently took place as part of our annual Pennies for Patients fundraiser. This year, though, Pennies for Patients took on the new name Turn It Up for Tyler. This is because we dedicated all profits to Tyler Perea, a CHS student currently fighting leukemia. Events took place over a two-week period, beginning with raffles for teachers' parking spots directly outside of the school, and ending with taping our principal to the cafeteria wall. In between, the student government team organized numerous small fundraisers in collaboration with local businesses, such as everybody's favorite family restaurant on Mendon Road and Angelo's, to bring a variety of breakfast and dinner. From these experiences alone, student government allocated $1,000. This was only a small fraction, though, of the total $7,000 we delivered to Tyler and his family to conclude Turn It Up for Tyler.
Hi, my name is Audie, and as for upcoming efforts from our group, we will be hosting our second blood drive located in the high school's auditorium in partnership with Rhode Island Blood Center, projected to take place on May 12. We are hoping to extend it to not only faculty working in the building, but also the elementary school staff in our transitional building. We have our freshman and sophomore spring fling dance coming up, as well as junior prom, which students have already sold tickets for. Finally, with Teacher Appreciation Week slowly approaching, student government is planning to show their gratitude by decorating teacher copyrooms, hand-delivering notes written by students themselves, hosting dance parties for when staff arrive at the school, and finally preparing a self-serve candy bar to fuel up for everything for our, everything our educators do for us. We look forward to our next, we look forward to our next update. Thank you for your time.
Thank you both for the update. We appreciate it. Personnel announcements, Ms. Drazek?
Hi, good evening. I have two personnel announcements this evening. I have two retirements. The first one is retirement after 26 years of service, effective 6/30/2025 Susan Brady, a paraprofessional at Cumberland High School, and a retirement after 23 years of service, effective 6/30/2025 Karen Sadowski, a special educator at our preschool. Thank you.
Thank you. Superintendent's report, Dr. Thornton?
Madam Chair, just two quick items tonight first. Just a quick plug. On our website, we have a link for all end-of-year activities for all the schools. Here's just a sample of some of the activities. You can see at Garvin, we have the fifth day celebration, June 16th. Ashton, similar activities, cultural night, May 22nd. Beaufort Norton, you can see some events there. Community Culture Fest, Cumberland Hill, recycling celebration, June 13. So you get the idea. So all the schools, we have the activities there. And for the full list, go to the homepage, and you can see the link, and you have a copy of the full list in your packet. Yes, you do. Thank you. Mike? And to construction, some good news to report. We finished two of the roof sections that were leaking for a long time in Cumberland. It's great to report now that they are completed. The first one is the bump out in the wellness center, where it was leaking for many years, and it's now completely redone, a new roof. That's great. Also, the main entrance by the high school where the guidance offices, that was leaking, where the flashing was, that's all new. So that's the, the work there. It's all completely done, and we're hoping, you know, not leaking at all. So it's great, great to see. Over at Community School, we continue to move on. The sheetrock is largely done. The bathroom tile is going in, the bathroom, toilets are going in, the cabinetry. On the upper left, the electrical services are in. The windows came out last week during vacation week in the back. New windows are en route. Next slide, Mike. And over here, the gym has a whole new ceiling grid. Also, you can see here, I don't know if you noticed, at Garvin and Community, the fashion back in the day was putting a heating system at around the three-foot level in a gym. Not a good idea when the kids are in gym. So that's been removed, as it was at Garvin. So that's good to see. Also, once again, another bathroom example. You can see that's completed. Once again, more sheetrock. And once again, from last time, that is a view of the old cafeteria. That's now a hallway, and there are rooms on both sides, left and right. The playground at Cumberland Hill, I saw them today. They finished pouring all the cement. It is complete. The last step, step now is they have to come out and pour the bases around the apparatus and bring in, I think, a foot, a foot of wood chips. Yeah, so that's all coming on. Next up, these folks go over to Garvin and start to demo the Garvin playground and start the same process, then Ashton. So it's exciting to see. Will, how long before we think we're finished over here at Ashton? Okay, end of next week. So that's one down, two to go. And that's all I have tonight.
Any questions for Dr. Thornton? No, thank you very much, Dr. Thornton. Now, a report out of executive session meeting, report out of execu, executive session meeting on 4/24/2025. Report out of executive session votes. No, no report out from executive session for votes. Vote to seal minutes of executive session. Do I have a motion to seal the minutes of executive session? Motion by Ms. Feather? Second by Ms. Goldstein. All in favor? Any opposed? That passes seven to zero. Reports of standing committees. Fiscal and Management Subcommittee update. Ms. Smith?
Thank you. The fiscal subcommittee did meet earlier this evening. We have no resolutions this week, so take a picture of that. That's never happened before. And we have only one payment of the bill that we'll discuss later. But this is my favorite meeting of the month when we have this one, because Chartwell comes in and talks to us, and they give us their updates. So the year-to-date data from Chartwell through the end of March, our profit is at $144,175. Again, their guarantee was $123,000 for the entire year, so we're well above that. And the other thing that I think is amazing, the year-to-date growth in lunches from last year to now, we are serving 50,181 more lunches so far this year than we served last year. And for breakfast, we're serving about 3,800 more this year than we have last year at this time. And let's remember that they took away some of the good stuff from the breakfast, so it was a slow start to this season. But yeah, I think that the numbers speak volumes to how well Chartwell's doing with our student population and, and how much they're really enjoying the offerings that they're getting. So keep up the great work.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Policy and Procedures Subcommittee update, Ms. Feather. Operations Subcommittee update, Ms. Shea?
We have not met. We're hoping to hopefully get on the schedule by the end of May.
And District Health and Wellness Subcommittee update, Ms. Shea?
Scheduled to meet on May 8th as well.
Thank you very much. We're skipping public hearing. New business, discussion and a vote to approve homeschool instruction requests. There were no homeschool instruction requests. Discussion and a vote on amended 2024, 2025 budget. Mr. McGrath?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the school committee. What we're looking to tonight is to amend the 24, 25 budget to recognize the use, additional use of fund balance in this fiscal year as we settle the teacher contracts. So this is in this current fiscal year. We're not talking about next year's budget until the next line. But yeah, we just need a vote to kind of memorialize that adjustment that needed to be made.
Questions for Mr. McGrath? Yes, Ms. Smith?
So this, the one that we're voting on tonight is only that one adjustment related to the fund balance, where we have to use more money from our fund balance for this year that we're in now.
Correct. This is for this fiscal year as part of the contract, as we settle those contracts, the additional use was needed. So.
Thank you. Ms. Feather?
What's the amount?
So the overall use right now in the amended budget is 2.2. As the year closes out, we're hoping that number will pull back a little bit as we close out some of the POs and such. So that would probably be on the high end, would be the, the full use of that amount.
Any other questions? Ms. Goldstein?
Thank you. What is that, that leaves in the fund balance?
That would be, I don't have, I think it's on one of the other slides. It would, it would be 5.3 minus the 2.2, so 4.8, I think, is what the ending balance would be.
I actually have a slide on that. In one second, you'll see that momentarily.
Any other questions for Ms. McGrath? Okay, can I have a motion to vote on the amended 2024, 2025 budget? Motion by Ms. Feather? Second by Ms. Goldstein. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? That passes seven to zero. Discussion only of school committee adopted 2025, 2026 budget. Dr. Thornton?
Good evening. Mike, if you could pull up the slideshow? Thank you. So each year, as you know, we pass a budget, or I give you a budget, you pass a budget, and it goes to town hall, and that happened this year. Typically, after that process happens, I go to the town hall with Mr. McGrath, and we problem-solve with the mayor, look at all the numbers, the levy. It's also a process of looking at, you know, how much we're spending to fix our schools. As you know, we're in our fourth reno, right? Reno addition. So those bills are, are coming due. This year, I know, I think if memory serves, it's $800,000 of new dollars, you know, plus the operating budget. So we do that process, and it really is collaborative, and I really appreciate the mayor's partnership as, each year as we do this. Having said that, this year in our conversations, we also knew that, given all the, the budget variables, we're coming up against the top of the levy, 3%. And at that top, it looked like it would only, you know, level fund us. So the mayor did give us a letter to, you know, have us, you know, consider having it zero. So I, I wanted to model what it would look like if we did this. So once again, discussion only, right? Before I do it, though, I want to give you some, just some background of, you know, where we are and what, how Cumberland looks. So Mike, if you can go ahead. First, let's talk about what's called per pupil expenditure. How much each child, you know, how much we spend a child. Every town has a number. And Cumberland has historically been the lowest in Rhode Island. I went back four years to give a sense, it's Cumberland at 15, 214 for a child. Barrington's second, you can see that, and then Sackett's third. That was back in 2020. Mike? Next slide. Once again, we are again, 1607, you know, 1669, and you can see third place Patucket. Once again, these are the COVID years, so we all did bump up a little bit, but we are still the lowest in Rhode Island. Next year, Cumberland again, 17345. You, you get the idea. So we're the lowest here. And one more year for you. Cumberland, once again, 17451. There is no 24 number out now. It rides typically behind a couple of years. That's our latest data we have on PPE. But not only are we, go back one, actually, no, that's right. Go ahead, Mike. Thank you, Mike. The obvious question people will sometimes ask me, so if you're the lowest funded and you're high achieving, how can that be? And, you know, what's that about? So we want to try to unpack that for you a little bit. So to me, I think our teachers are laser-focused with Tony's team, curriculum instruction assessment. We really focus on what matters. I think that's unique in Rhode Island. That's one of the reasons. I think we invest in the right places. We have essentials teachers. We have interventionists, the teachers that help the kids move, right? How to grow those kids. We do well with that. We have less staffing in other towns. Here's a quick example. Across the river, you have Lincoln. There are $3,000 more per child. We did one little exercise. To have the same proportion of teacher assistants as they do, we'd have to add 18 of them. That's about $1.1 million. So we have less people than other, other towns. Transportation, we think on average, we have lower busing costs. In our contracts, we have less items in the contracts. I mean, some, some towns I know have life insurance for families, entire families. So, you know, overall, I think those are some of the reasons. But, you know, as I'll tell you in a second, I think if we do make these cuts, it'll seriously erode into what we're doing. So I'll talk more about that in a second. Mike? Let's look at PPE Rhode Island in terms of the average. So I would tell you here, not only are we in last, we're falling behind. I'll give you an example here. Mike? So over on the left, the four years again, 2020 to 2023, you can see the average PPE in Rhode Island, right? That's the average of all the districts. The first one, 18,000. You see that one? And down below, 23 changed, 23, 357. And then you have the Cumberland PPE next to it, right? And then on the right, you have Cumberland's number below the average, right? So we started out in 2020, 3,002, 24, behind the average. And now, in 23, we are 5,906 behind. We're, we're behind, and we're dropping. We're last and dropping. So it's, it is quite alarming. So that's why I think, you know, it's critical. We try to get all the funding we can to kind of, you know, keep things going. Next slide, Mike? So what's the task at hand tonight? It's discussion only. It's one version of what I think you, you could cut if you had to cut. I would not recommend any of these cuts, but I want to show you just, you know, what the thought process was right now. And I have my team here tonight. Should we have any questions for them? They're all here. If you want to talk to them about, you know, the impacts. So go ahead, Mike. So first, before we look at the cuts, I want to, you know, talk about one thing. It's fund balance. Some people, you know, may say, well, you have that savings account, the fund balance, why not just spend that? So I want to take you through that process. As Tim mentioned a minute ago, we had 5.5 in 23. We just memorialized 2.2, right? That gives us the 3.3 as a balance. As you know, right now, we have 1.2 of fund balance in our current budget offering to the town, right? It leaves you with 2.1, if I had my math right. And then, if you were to blink right now and just say, okay, we're cut to zero, let's put it all in fund balance, not a good idea. I would not recommend it. If you did it, it's now 2.9 in fund balance. That leaves you with $400,000 in fund balance. That's a violation of your policy, and also terrible fiscal management. Now, the next year, the problem will be compounded, right? So, next slide, Mike? Let's look at next year. So when we talk about budgets, it's not just one year, it's, you know, multiple years. So in 26, 27, just, let's do the math quick. We know, we think right now, we'll need 2.6 million in new revenue. That's basically the last year of the, the contracts, right? We have an increase in busing. These are round numbers, right? Give you a sense. And if we add the 1.2 million in fund balance, you know, we have to come up with about $3.8 million in two years, right? So let's assume state aid's the same, 1.6 million. That leaves us with 2.2 to find either by town aid increases, use of fund balance, or cutting, right? So that's two years away. So my point is, you can't rely on fund balance to get out of this. You know, if we do get all, all the funding, 1.7, that's great. If we get half the funding, I'd say you have to reduce. You can't use fund balance to compound the problem. So I just wanted to tell you about that. Now, go on to the cuts. Here we are. So this is just, like I said, one version of what I thought we, we could consider. So the first one is six essential teachers at NCMS, all the teachers at NCMS, all six of them, that help, you know, move those students forward. And this Crawford Lederer can certainly talk about that at a, a public comment. We have one school psychologist that's currently open at Garvin. It's a huge problem. We need to fill it. And right now, in this model, we wouldn't fill that, that job. We have one special educator at the high school currently open. We need to fill it. Once again, we, our numbers are increasing. In this model, we wouldn't fill that job. In this model, we would reduce five sections or five classes at the high school, five AP classes. I'll give you some examples. We have computer science, I think around 12 students subscribed AP computer science. We wouldn't run that. AP research has eight, eight students. We wouldn't run it. Get the idea? We, we wouldn't run five APs. That's, that's really a black eye for a high school, but that's something, that's, I think, how, how bad these cuts would, how deep they would go, right? That's one example. We just put it back a while ago. We would eliminate teaming at McCourt, and that's about 300,000. Line items, Ms. McGrath and I would search the 20% of the budget of the other, of the things, and find 1, 161 out of all the things that we have. There's not a lot there, but we would find that money for you. MLL, we'd reduce one ML teacher at BF. They currently have one teacher per grade level and two other ML teachers. The reason they have them is they have approximately 30 students at Level 1. They speak no English whatsoever. And these two teachers, they work with those kids. In this model, we'd take one off, and now we have one less person to work with those, those students that come in. Once again, not recommended. And then, we have a computer lab, I believe, is five years old at the high school. We wouldn't fix that lab. We'd let it just kind of degrade. And the last one, two interventionists, I believe, we had looking at BF and Community. So right now, we'd take two of those off. If you did all those things, that's 1.7 million. And certainly, there are other things you could do, but I'm, I'm here to tell you, there's nothing I can think of that would not be problematic. I know, I know people have talked about busing. I'll give you a quick busing idea. You can increase the walking distance of every level. Elementary to 1, 1.75 to 1.25. Middle, 1 and 1/2 to 2. High school, 2 to 2 and 1/2. Not recommended, but you would save about six buses. But you'd also probably knock out all buses at BF, by the way, if you did that. So just problematic. I know people sometimes talk about sports on cut lists, and I wouldn't put that forward here on this list, but certainly that's something to consider if you ever want to consider it. It's 680,000 for sports. That's the number. So like I said, a lot of just problematic things to think about with this. Last slide, Mike? You've seen that before, the quadrant slide. Remember that from the budget talks? So just for the folks, first time you're seeing it, four quadrants, going up and down, north, south, that's achievement levels for a school district. Going left to right, that's your cost per child. So you want to be in the upper-left quadrant, right? That means you're not expensive and you're high achieving. So look at Cumberland. We're the far-left upper corner. That's really, we're efficient, and we're high achieving. I would tell you, you know, I don't know, I don't know how fast it would, it would happen, but I think we would degrade. Go ahead, Mike. I just, you know, did a visual for you. I think we would degrade over time. If you keep cutting like this, this year, next year, you would see a drop. So it's just a question of, for the, the town, what's the tolerance for, you know, for that? And how do you feel about, you know, our current achievement levels, you know, and all, all that type of thing? So that's pretty much it. I just wanted to give you like the brutal facts of one version of what it could be, and, and that's, that's what I have for you tonight. We have, any questions? We have the team here to answer questions.
Questions from the committee? Okay. And just, Dr. Thornton, thank you very much for putting this presentation together to kind of showing the gravity if this cut had to be made. So I truly appreciate your time and effort with this. Obviously, this is not what we want for the Cumberland School District. We want to support over, over 5,000 students we have in this district. And I know as a member, I'll do whatever I can to try to do that while supporting mayor and the town council, so we can all work together to get this done. And I feel we could do that. Any other questions or thoughts? Next, discussion and a vote to approve the resolution. Ms. Smith, as the chair of fiscal, I'd love for you to take this, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And this is in conjunction to somewhat of what Dr. Thornton had just discussed. The Cumberland School Department, Cumberland School Committee is recommending that we put a resolution in place to send to town council, a resolution of the Cumberland School Committee, supporting a tax increase exceeding 3% to allow for adequate funding for our schools. So some of the items that Dr. Thornton discussed certainly support why we are looking to put this in and having this discussion tonight as a school committee to vote on it. I, I want to give some more information and add that. A, a big issue that has always been brought up is that we're supporting two school systems in our town because of BVP. This isn't against the charter schools. This is against the funding that happens for it. So I just want to give some numbers on some of the data. Back in 2021, we were paying $16,102 per student at BVP, and we were pretty similar to that at $16,007 for our students in the Cumberland Public Schools. In 2022, the BVP increased by 15%, and the state then required us to pay $18,594 per student. In 2023, it increased by another 8%, and we are now paying $20,120 per student attending BVP, while we're paying and have a per pupil spending of $17,451 here in the district. We're outperforming, and we're paying more for our students to go to a school because of the state formula. This really factors in to why we need to look at additional funding and, and some of the impacts. This comes directly out of our budget. This money is being taken away from our own students here. And to look at it in a two-year increase at BVP from the state funding, they increased the funding by 25%, yet as Dr. Thornton showed you, our increase was not nearly anywhere near that on our per pupil spending. So it certainly does cut into what happens with our students. A couple of things that Dr. Thornton also mentioned was the updated contracts. During the years of COVID, our teachers stepped back in their contract negotiations with us and allowed for minimal to no increase in their salary because the most important thing happening for those teachers at that time was to get the kids through a pandemic. I can't even talk about it. It was so frustrating. These teachers have stepped up time and time again. They've now come to the table last year, and we renegotiated a contract. And our top-tier teachers were the lowest paid in the state, and now we have increased that some, right? Right now, we're still, teacher-wise, we're still ranked, I think we're number 15 in the state as far as payment to our teachers. If we did not increase this and, and do this contract with our teachers, we would have lost those people. They stood by us and our students, and we would have lost them. And our students would have continued to suffer, and there was going to be no recovery from something like that. The pandemic was difficult enough. We don't have funds coming in from the government to help cover such drastic losses of our teachers. So in total, it was a $2.1 million increase that we're asking for, or the cost for the teachers in this new contract, yet our total increase on ask to the town is 1.7 million. I just want to point that out because it shows that we are continuously looking to find savings still. That's what keeps our number low. And sometimes, it's not a bad thing to have a low number, but it's a bad thing if your number's low and you, and, and it's not taking care of the team that is bringing in the results. So just wanted to bring up some of that. Another thing, MLL in the state of Rhode Island is far outpacing anywhere else in the United States. There's no doubt. The numbers have been astronomical in the number of MLL students coming into Rhode Island. Outside of some of the cities, Cumberland, Newport Johnston, South Kingston, North Providence, Central Falls, we're all running over 150% increase in our MLL students. Here in Cumberland, just as an example, we had 137 MLL students back in 2019. We have 348 right now. We had expected to have 298. We're already outpacing that this year by 50 students. And as Dr. Thornton talked about, the resources that have to go in depending on the on the level of those students, is much higher than our cost per pupil spending for a regular education student. We have 15 MLL professionals that are solely dedicated to these 348 students at a cost of 1.5 million. Now, that's a cost of 1.5 million in the lowest-paid district for per pupil spending. Think about those numbers. And yet, our town still brings in the growth. If we start cutting these numbers back, my personal belief is that our growth in this town is going to be suffering. People are not going to move in. That growth number directly plays into the levy and the town taxes. If we don't continue to have that growth, we're not going to bring in what we need to in the revenues that the town needs to support it. So some of the facts that, you know, I just presented, I just wanted to mention one other thing. Based upon the audited financial data of the town, which included the school department, we, under the audited data, the school is 52% of the town's budget. We're going in asking for a 3.4% increase. That's .4 over the cost of what the 3% would be if the Town Council were to keep it at the 3% and not pass that. Yet, we're being asked to cut 1.7 million. So that's a 0% increase versus a 3.4. We're asking, and we're trying to get it as close as we can to the 3. For the last four years, some of us have sat up here. We've gone into the town. We've cut numbers. We've gone in and asked and worked with the town for 2.2%, 1.9%. We have kept these numbers low. This is a different year, and we understand there's a lot of debt on the town side as well, our new school debts out there. We, you know, it's unfortunate that we're going to be carrying that debt for a little longer than perhaps we all wanted to with the budget. And we shouldn't have all of these new schools and all of our students suffer by cutting back things that Dr. Thornton just showed us. Those aren't playing with numbers. Those are, those are scary, scary numbers. And that's really what's going to happen. We are going to be looking at these kind of cuts, right? We're trying to balance what we can, but unless we go in and approve this resolution to give to the Town Council, asking for that 3% increase, or that 3% to be increased and allow for that overage over the levy, we are, we are going to be in trouble. So, and just one other point, if I could, Madam Chair. That 1.7 million dollars, if we looked at that, that we're asking for, that's $340 a student. That's all we're asking for, for our per pupil spending increases, $340. It's just something to keep in mind. Thank you.
Thank you. So I'll have the pleasure of the committee for SC-R-2025-02, a resolution of the Cumberland School Committee, supporting a tax increase exceeding 3% to allow, to allow for adequate funding for schools.
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Discussion comes after the second. Motion by Ms. Feather. Second by Ms. Goldstein. Discussion? Ms. Dean?
Yes. I don't think there's a single person up here that doesn't think that the school department needs this money. I don't think there's a single person up here who voted against sending that budget to the town. I went to that meeting where the, they were, the Town Council was going to vote on the, on the ordinance, and I was asked to speak on it. I'm not allowed to speak on it, so I did not speak on it. But I said with no doubt that the school department needs that money. We're talking about the levy, and I appreciate that. The ordinance that was going to be voted on didn't differentiate the levy out of the taxes. It was a ordinance to remove the cap. The ordinance did not move the cap from 3% to 4%. The ordinance removed the cap. And we are bound by state law at 4%, but that doesn't mean that the state can't change their cap to 5 or 6 or 7. I went to a meeting on, several meetings. The latest one was about the increase in power, power bills. You know, everyone knows homeowners insurance is increasing. The, the, you know, the interest rates are increasing. And to always say it's just this much more, it's just this much more, but that's everything, is just this much more. We go into the finance subcommittee, we talk about $46,000 in unpaid lunch because kids can't afford to pay their lunch bills. We talk about food security for kids down in, you know, in District One. And I say District One because I got lambasted about the amount of poverty that's in District One. And now I, and I was already aware, but, you know, we can't say it's just a little bit more. You know, some people are hanging on by a thread. Some people already can't afford to feed their kids. The ordinance was to remove the restrictions, the cap on the taxes. Didn't say just $56 a household, more for the tax levy. I made a comment on Facebook. I went down to the meeting, and I, I did not even oppose, in my comment on Facebook, oppose the, the ordinance. Not only that, I don't have a vote on the ordinance. The mayor asked me what I thought. Well, he didn't ask me. He asked somebody from the school committee. The chair was there. Why didn't, the mayor asked the chair. And you could have gotten up, and you could have said, you know, we, we support the, you know, the 3% cap being removed. And then he could have voted on it at that meeting, or the council would have voted on it at that meeting. And we'd had the extra couple of weeks, you know, to do the budget. Now, we're doing this manufactured crisis for political theater, right? The mayor sends this ordinance. I mean, I don't know who wrote this ordinance, but I would like to make a motion that we remove the 3% out of the ordinance because I am 100% agreed that the 1.7 million dollars is needed. I am not in agreement that we should be telling the mayor, who is responsible for the budget, and who, in my opinion, could have made better financial decisions, to have found that money somewhere else. I am not in agreement that the school committee should be saying that giving the teachers a 3% raise at top tier, which in my opinion is, is miniscule. That doesn't even, doesn't even meet cola. Doesn't, doesn't even meet the cost of living. From nine, from step nine below, 1% is, is criminal, right? I, I am in 100% agreement, they need more money. The schools need more money. The town should be finding that money, but not from the people that are just hanging on. They should be finding it from grossly over, overpriced buildings that, you know, that now have people that are assigned to them. Temporary dams, or $3 million permanent dams, who knows? There are plenty of places in this town selling cell towers. There are plenty of places in this town, we can find the money without taking it from the hands of the children who already have trouble finding food and already don't come to school because they have parents that have to work so many hours that they're not home when the kids go to school. We talk about this stuff all the time. So just $56 might be the last $56 before these people get foreclosed on or can't afford the food they need for their kids. I 100% agree. We need the 1.7 million dollars. I 100% disagree that the school committee should be saying, take it from the residents of the town. It's not our purview. We don't have jurisdiction. Let the Town Council and the mayor figure out where to take our money, or get that money.
Ms. Feather?
So the, the number, the just 56 number, I just want to clarify here so that everyone in the public knows. I mentioned that number because, well, not 56, actually. I referenced anywhere from $35 to about $60 per year, per year. So I don't know, I'm not clever enough with math to, to be able to just bring that down to a per paycheck. But per year is what the increase, that, that 35 to 60-ish, per year would be what the, what the tax bill would be for typical taxpayers in our town. I, I gave you the chance to speak. I don't believe in political theater. I don't like political theater. We sent a budget to, to the mayor, and in the mayor, as, the mayor essentially let us know and let everyone in-town know what would be necessary in order to pass that budget. I fully support that we, you know, do whatever we can to encourage the mayor to pass that budget. I fully support the mayor and the Town Council. And I find that they have always been incredibly responsible fiscal stewards for this town. They have not ever let us down. And I would like to point out that it was our own mayor who actually initially wanted, you know, back in the day, we needed that cap. We cannot survive with that cap in place right now. It's a .4 difference, .4% difference there. And we just, you know, this resolution encourages the Town Council and the mayor to, to take care of that so that we can take care of our students.
Mr. Dean?
No, I, I'm just saying, I wasn't, I wasn't referencing you with the 56. That was at the council meeting. The mayor said it was 56. And the 56 was the mean, the, the mean number for houses, property values in, in Cumberland. But that was 56 on the extra 1%. So if you take into account the previous 3%, then, you know, that they're going to get, then, then, you know, it's a little bit more than that. But it was, the 56 wasn't something you referenced, so I just clarified that.
Ms. Smith?
Thank you. I just want to, this is, this is difficult. We have to isolate ourselves here to look at what we need to do as a school committee. And it is very difficult because we all have our thoughts on how it should be done with the town, what the Town Council should do, what the mayor should do. And I personally appreciate every single person sharing those views. However, we cannot let that guide us into how we make our resolution. We, we hope that they don't have to raise the levy. We're urging them that if that's the only way that they can do it, that they do raise that. And that's what this resolution is doing, is just saying, if you are saying that you cannot find that money in any other way, then we're asking you not to cut our budget, not to make us level-funded, not to lose 1.7 million dollars and have multiple cuts. But we are saying we will support, and we're asking you to support whatever is being brought in front of you, Town Council, by the mayor. So, right or wrong, wherever they find the money, that is their decision to do it. This is just a way of saying, look, we're looking at all of this, and we're urging you, if you can't find it in any other way, then we're, we're going to support the mayor's proposal to increase that 3% for the year.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Anyone else?
I agree, this is all about the children, all about the schools, and how we can make sure that we can increase the budget this year in order to support everyone. So I appreciate everyone's comments. Anyone else?
We have a motion. We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? One nay. Mr. Dean passes 6 to 1. Thank you. Discussion, we're going to skip. Yep, we're skipping B, which should be E. And we're going down to E, which should be F. Discussion and our vote to approve payment of bills.
Yes, as mentioned, we have just the one bill tonight, $246,152.20. This was approved 3-0 in the fiscal subcommittee meeting, and I would move passage.
Ms. Smith moves motions to vote to approve payment of bills. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Dean. All in favor? Any opposed? That passes 7 to 0. Comments from the public? Do I have any comments from the public? Please state your name, your address, and you have three minutes for comments. And the committee may not respond. Thank you.
My name is Karen Friedman. I live at 10 Sunnyside Drive. It's nice to see you all. I speak tonight as a taxpayer and as a former school committee member. First, I want to thank you all for your service. It is never easy, and I thank you for that. As more than half of you go through your first budget cycle, I'd like to lend my perspective and give some advice. I worked with the current mayor for six years. He was always collaborative, transparent, and honest. He knows how school budgets work, and he knows how the tax levy works. He's always looking ahead, and he has told us that this day would come, when we would need to raise revenue to pay for the bonds and increase funding to the schools. Our business managers have told us this. This isn't new news. Schools get funded by the state and by Cumberland. Some of us have worked hard to try to change the state funding formula. Now we have the chance to change Cumberland's funding. We have two revenue streams, the state and the local funding. Last year, I asked the mayor about raising the tax limit because I knew what was happening, but it was too late in the process. It couldn't get onto the agenda and through the process. We are, as you hear over and over again, but people seem to just, they're numb to it. We are the lowest per pupil expenditure in the state, and that is simply a disgrace. We now have the chance to change that, and I encourage everyone to contact their Town Council member. Every year, there are hard decisions to make because we are limited by our revenue streams. You don't need to agree with the mayor to work with him. You need to speak up. You need to have your facts. You need to collaborate. You need to listen. You are always a school committee member first. During budget season, I would recommend that you are at every council meeting, and that you speak up for the schools, and support the hard truth that you need more money, which can only come by raising the tax limit. And for the record, as a school committee member, you can join a discussion on the agenda when it's related to the schools. Now more than ever, we must build a culture of respect, accountability, and constructive dialogue. Leadership should bring people together, not tear them apart. Our community deserves representatives who listen, collaborate, and work within established processes to create positive, lasting change. And I know you can do it. Thank you. Three minutes.
Good evening. Bethany Coughlin. I live at 30 Windermere Way in Warwick, Rhode Island, former resident of Cumberland. I had prepared some words that I wanted to share with you based on what we saw when we were presented with the potential list of cuts. I'm actually going to put aside my, my speech, my, my requests, my hopes, for another meeting because I don't think I could have said better than the way Mrs. Smith articulated the needs of, of the Cumberland schools, the, the work of the fabulous, dedicated teachers, the building administrators, many of which sit in the room, the district leaders. We have come a long way. I've been an educator in Cumberland for 36 years. I've been principal of North Cumberland Middle School for the past 12. I will say that when I entered, when I started at North Cumberland Middle School, we had an ELA proficiency rate of 49%. We had a math proficiency rate of 42%. We have come a long way. And the work that has happened as a result of many, many decisions, and I can say, over 36 years, have been some good and some bad decisions in this district. And, and I can't tell you how, in the last 12 years, 15 years, how the good has really outweighed the bad, to the point where now we are a top district in the, in the state. I look at North Cumberland Middle School. We placed first in math in 2024 RICAS of all the middle schools in the state. We're third in ELA. That doesn't come from luck. It doesn't come from, it comes from good, talented people who are willing and committed to facilitate some successful programming. So when I look at that list, and I will say Mrs. Dredik was sitting beside- So when I look at that list, and I will say Mrs. Dredik was sitting beside me at the meeting and she had my hand because she knew number one was going to hit me right in the heart. And it did, and I will be back if the cuts come to fruition. But I have to say, from a building administrator, from a principal's perspective, from someone who, um, educated their children in Cumberland, grew up in Cumberland, I have to say that it is very refreshing to hear from all of you how much you support the work. And I do hope that I don't have to come back during this budget season, but I thank you. Thank you for your kind words and thank you for your support.
Thank you, anyone else for public comment?
Avenue, Cumberland. Been coming to these meetings and listening and I don't like the scoring of schools and scoring of everything, but it continues to happen, like, we're level three here and over here on that. And Ms. Smith brought up a great thing about how good the teachers are and how underpaid they are. I'd like to see a slideshow to see where they're paid against those other schools that are just performing us and see why we're not getting them more money too. Because we've obviously said how overperforming all our schools are. Fight for them too, please. And if we're going to pay a little bit more on taxes, three-point-four, there should be a cap. It should make sure that it goes away next year, that it's not automatic. Because when my cellphone bill went up, it stays up. When cable goes up, your cable stays up. Everybody says it's two-hundred-and-eighty dollars for a cable bill because it was supposed to be a small increase, you're electric. They take a little and then they keep it. And then they wait to reach and take the next. I do believe the schools need more money. I believe that they overachieve. I believe that everybody tries their hardest, but they miss a lot of points. Cumberland has pipes that are breaking every week. They're tearing up a road everywhere you go. Every time you turn on, there's a water main break. They're not spending money great fixing that, but they want to take it from the school department. Do better with your town maintenance to save money there. The fire taxes go up, everything is going up, that's all they're saying up there. Everybody's pointing at everybody, you're not right. Have a discussion, hurt some feelings and figure out really what's best. It's obvious that different schools have different kinds of students with different needs. Different funds need to go to different schools to get them to be at the same level. Different schools at different time have a different quality of teacher at any given moment. It's not about a bad kid, a poor kid, a bad family. It's social economics that factor into every decision that's made. That's all that I'm saying. And it's not a political show because this one says something bad or that one doesn't say anything or a school committee member gets up and hugs the teacher because they feel bad for him. It's human nature. People get excited about what's important to them or what hurts to them. And I'm going to come to every meeting and I worry about my child and my wife, who's a teacher, who's been underpaid for years and years and years. And the other school committee member can come up here and point fingers of what you didn't do? Well, why didn't you get the teachers in Cumberland more money when they were here as a school committee? That's all I'm saying. Fight for everybody equally.
Any other public comment? I understand during public comment, just let's not yell at other people in the audience, please. Thank you. Uh, Dr. Thornton, do we have to vote to go into executive session?
We do not.
So then can I have a motion to adjourn? Motion by Ms. Goldstein. Second by Ms. Feather, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes seven to zero, we adjourn this evening at seven fifty-four PM.